Hey Rita.
Hi, how are you?
Good. So, does somebody want to move that we accept the minutes from the last meeting that Hillary sent around?
Any edits?
Any edits?
I mean.
Yeah. Second?
I'll second.
You will? All in favor of adopting the minutes to last meeting? Alright. All the committee members that are here approved. Oh, yeah, thank you, Hillary. Steve, did that idea of freedom of expression, that those issues that are unrelated to gas powered leaf blowers, is there been any progress on that? Hello, committee?
So I did reach out to Ira and he was gonna get ahold of Nick Bamonte in the office to try to review the ordinances that were in question. The only thing I don't have, Tom, is we need to sort of narrow down the actual ordinance, the language and the numbers that we want them to review. Do you have a current list, the ones that we want to get to them to take a look at?
Well, I haven't prioritized. I sent you the list that Jeff Holland had proposed. The only one that I'm... So I didn't try to narrow it down, I could. But the only one that I know is a problem is the issue of who we can have in our parks. And we don't even limit it to town residents. So the ordinance says that we do, and so that's just a cleanup thing. We don't need lawyers for that problem. Of the other list, I thought if the law firm could eyeball it, if somebody that had much more recent familiarity with the First Amendment, they might be able to get a quick sense of which ones are key. Certainly prioritizing the list would be fine with me.
And Tom, is it just the ones that Mr. Holland brought to our attention? Or are there others that we want to take a look at?
I'm only focusing on, well, I'd love all our ordinance to be perfect, but right now, the only ones that I'm bringing to the table are the one that Mr. Holland has put on his list. And they're all related to freedom of expression and assembly.
Alright, so we'll make sure that we get Nick to review that, you know, in terms of constitutionality, and we'll circle back to the next meeting.
That would be great, thank you. So, and your name is?
John Steele.
John Steele, welcome, John.
How do you spell your last name?
S.T.E.L.
S.E.E., yeah, thank you. John, who was the first, you know, Canaan citizen to bring to the Conservation Commission the idea that we should have some kind of restriction on the...
Fantastic, welcome. So, John, here's the discussion guide. So, Linda and I were talking about, there's probably no sense spending a lot of time going through all the bad things that gas powered leaf blowers can do. So I just got like, you know, very few words about it. Sort of three categories, there's the health impact between toxic emissions and hearing loss, there's an ecosystem impact with CO2 and soil damage, and interruption of activities, which we certainly realized in space during COVID when people were working from home. Is that what turned you onto the issue?
It was actually pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID?
Right, being driven crazy by the noise.
Right? So if anybody wants to add to that, that's fine, we'll just move on.
Wait, Tom, you said, sorry, the health impact, the ecosystem impact, what was the third thing? I'm sorry.
Interruption of activities.
Interruption of activities.
People that can't work from home because of the noise.
Well, yes, it's really, I think, the impact on daily life. Your neighbors who have to hear this noise and the health impact of that noise. And that noise causes stress, it impacts children, right? So it's not harmless.
And you were always bringing up a social justice issue as well.
Well, there's a separate aspect here, because also, the people who are primarily using these are lawn care workers mostly, but even immigrants. Many cases, using these without any protection at all, all day long. So they're the ones breathing fumes, they're the ones suffering loss. These are the least socially privileged people in our town. They're able to stand up for themselves and demand protection. And my point was really, is this the kind of town we want to be? Where we are basically causing people to lose their hearing and suffer this cancer risk just because our leaves are depressed.
Well, matter of fact, you could argue that almost all of the impact of toxic emissions is on the workers, on the landscapers.
Well, most of the deer.
Most of the deer, I mean, we all breathe fumes, I breathe it when my neighbor's using them.
And then the vulnerable populations are the children and seniors as well, the most vulnerable, in addition to the lawn care workers.
But on a scale of 1 to 10, the workers are doing it seven hours nonstop, breathing it in immediately, so wearing the things on... The impact on other people is probably...
And it depends on where you live. If you live in a town, there could be five hours completely blown noise. So I don't know if you can really measure it in that way. But in terms of interruption of activities, we received several letters, and one of them was people couldn't sit outside, they couldn't, you know, be out in their yard, or they had to go inside if they were on the porch because of the noise. So it's not just people working from home, it's also just like Tom said, it's a lot of different activities.
Yeah, the right of peaceful enjoyment of your own property.
And it does travel through walls. It's not that you can block it out by just going inside.
Yeah. So I thought we could go through a quick overview of what some communities are doing. I think we're far from a dominant trend of what is going on in the world in reaction to leaf blowers. It's a little of this and that here and there. Some communities are, and these aren't mutually exclusive, you can see these multiple leafs being implemented. So what some communities do is restrict gas powered leaf blowers to certain hours or days or seasons. And that's probably the most popular so far of what communities are doing.
That's because it's the easiest to implement in legislation.
Least controversial, in some way it makes a lot of sense. I don't really comment on that, that if we thought that the health risk was profound and immediate and urgent, I don't think it would inspire me to change from 6 o'clock to 5 o'clock. You know, I'd want to do something more serious than that. So the very fact that people are happy with this makes me wonder, you know, maybe the way I would look at these is that people favor incremental change. They'd rather have incremental change than no change.
Yes, exactly.
They're not accepting the premise that this would solve the problem, but...
Most of it's the first step in legislation with three or five year plans.
But clearly, these have noise advantages. And any fewer hours that you do is more quiet. And then Conservation Commission proposal, among other towns, limit number of gas powered leaf blowers based on property size. Some communities, basically California, has banned the purchase of gas powered leaf blowers at some future date, it's about a year from now. You'll be able to continue to use any type of leaf blower that you want forever in California under the legislation, you just wouldn't be able to buy a new gas powered leaf blower. Some communities, Linda will have a better command of these than I would, but Larchmont, New York, and some others have done a total ban of use. They, I think, at least in the case of Larchmont, it's a much smaller community, it's like 1.1 square miles with 6,000 people. So obviously, the density is, and therefore, the lawn size is probably far less in Larchmont than you have in Canaan Zone.
But because the density, you know, properties are so close that, you know, the leaf blowers are more irritating.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Leaf blower on a four acre zone, right.
Yeah, you get a lot of bang for the buck. Maybe you could argue in Larchmont, every time you turn on a blower, you're taking off 10, 20 people. Here, that's less true. So some initiatives involve just creating awareness and letting people figure it out on their own once they're educated, awareness of the health risk and the appeal of alternative technologies. And then some communities have been fairly aggressive. Pasadena, California is, I'll take an example, but certainly there's a community in Alabama where the mayor just decided that he would convert all town activities over to electric. The whole town, all workers, everything they do. So I wanted Tiger to know about that, that I don't know if Tiger's gonna vote that we followed that Alabama town, but that's what some are doing. Others are promoting the use of electric equipment by demonstration projects. In some cases, subsidies on the transition over from the capital cost from gas to electric. And so the challenges for policymakers, in my perspective, this is just the way I'm looking, I try to think of all the issues, you know, what's easy about this, what's hard about this? One of them, one challenge is to evaluate the alternatives. Do we, and I'm talking about we and the people that are involved in the project, both from Conservation Commission and the Town Council, do we have our own understanding of the technical issues? For instance, a lot of what we read would assume that electric is just per se better. If you just go from gas to electric, you're done. But it's not quite that cut and dry. For one thing, depending on how you use the equipment, electric isn't gonna be totally quiet. Matter of fact, some people say in order to get the productivity that you get from a gas powered leaf blower, they recommend that you hold two electric blowers. And so if they're big enough to do what a gas powered leaf blower will do, it's not totally quiet. It also, one of the environmental concerns is the soil disrupting the soil and natural vegetation and wildlife. Electric leaf blowers are just bad on the soil.
Sounds extreme, but the best, most environmental approach would be to have no...
Breaking involved. Yeah. Yeah, the other thing is, again, understanding the alternatives is if you're looking at the environmental concern related to CO2, it would be helpful to have some sense, because I don't understand it, I'd like to understand it better, is how much CO2 is generated from creating the equipment and the batteries and the lithium and everything else. I'm not suggesting that I have any knowledge or conclusion about that, but I would just want to understand if we're gonna consider the... For instance, there's talk about the fact that a gas powered leaf blower is as polluting CO2 wise as many, many cars on many, many long distance drives. And I'm sure that's true, but they're not, it's not like they don't generate CO2 in the process of creating the leaf blower.
Right, there are some statistics, I think the American Green Zona Alliance has statistics on all of this.
So you...
Yeah, so we can...
Yeah, so that's notable, right.
So it is notable.
Another challenge is to forecast the pace of technological change. What I hear is that there's a definite trend of private homeowners, the do it yourself people, tending to buy and retail outfits tending to promote electric right now. And so, well, that's interesting. Is that what you get?
Yes.
Yeah.
And when my landscaper comes, I said, you can only use this on my property, so...
Well, that, I mean, it may be one of the whole run secrets, it's the homeowner turning into a landscaper and thinking, what I want? I mean, that's so persuasion maybe to get to that point, but I don't know how fast that electric might take hold just because the market perceives it being better, or that it might take hold because of technological advances. I went into Chubbies, you all know Chubbies? And I guess they sell a lot of electric equipment. Yeah. And I talked to one of the salesmen and I said, what would you do if you were Ucanan? And he said, well, what I would do is I would take a four year transition date. Everybody could do everything they're doing, but they would have four years' knowledge in advance to transition away from their old equipment. So that sounded interesting, I got home and I said, well, what if technology changes the paradigm in three and a half years? I've wasted a lot of time writing a rule that it may be inartful and not very sophisticated if I haven't taken that into account. I don't know when...
Well, you know, I do think that manufacturers, that there is manufacturing innovations that is going on right now. And the electric machines are getting more efficient, you know, then more powerful, et cetera. And yes, you know, right now, perhaps not as effective as we want it to be, but if we start now, then we're moving with the market. And I think we're talking about a movement anyway, not, you know, not just starting coal and as we said, banning, I would say, only electric. But, you know, moving in a transitional way.
Yeah.
Programmatically.
So, I think what you're saying, the knowledge is out there, but I certainly, as a body, I would want us to understand it.
Yes.
I certainly would like to have, I see as a challenge, that I don't know, we don't know very much about what our residents want. We can guess what they want. And if they were health conscious and didn't like noise, we could sort of surmise what they want. But we haven't really had a lot of discussions with a range of residents.
I understand.
Yeah.
So I did a spreadsheet of people who had written to us about leaf blowers, and I sent it around to the committee. So I have dates and names and things like that. So we had six people who, this is a very small sample size. We have six people who asked for restriction, various reasons. One person worked in a hospital at night and couldn't sleep during the day. Other people were complaining they couldn't enjoy outdoors. We had three people who said no restrictions at all. And then we had one person who wanted a choice. So I wasn't really totally clear on that, but we have heard from 10 people. So I just wanted to share that.
Yeah. Well, one thing that seems kind of obvious to me is if you did a survey and all you asked was, do you like noise? Everybody would say no. Do you like leaf blower noise? I think everybody would say no. So you have to ask the question that gets people to weigh pros and cons for them. You know, would they be willing to give up, to incur greater costs and/or give up personal freedoms? I don't have a good enough sense that makes me confident that I understand that. I'd like to be, one of the challenges is anticipating government action. I mean, you know, it's interesting, so Pasadena has a big, I think what they did is demonstration project. They turned parks into green zones and used all electric, and they started to train people on that. That, I'm sure they were interested to see that while they were going through that process, the whole state decided to prohibit the sale of gas powered leaf bars. So, you know, in that case, the two are probably consistent. But I truly would like to know if the state of Connecticut, if the EPA, if somebody else was gonna, you know, do something that made our efforts, you know, somewhat moot, or the ground rules would change under us if there were other governmental action.
I can speak to that for once.
Yeah.
I talked to Will Tascor, and he's on the Environment Committee. And he wrote a note to the committee asking them to take up this issue, and they tapped it. So, I mean, that's only one person.
Not in that, right.
It doesn't seem like Connecticut is necessarily going in that direction. I just wanted to add that when I looked up West, surprisingly, it has 26 towns that have put in restrictions. So that's New York State. Connecticut State, I don't know if that many places. Linda, you know a little bit about Greenwich, Westport, New Haven. These are the people I'm in touch with. And they're moving, Westport, I think, is going to be before their RTM this month. I spoke to Quiet Yards, one of the leaders of that program today. And they're, you know, they're going to be presenting in this ball as well.
In Greenwich.
In Greenwich. They've been working on this at this time, like many years now. Most of these communities have been at this for a while. Right. I was surprised to see so many places in West Denver, Arty Bedford, Brooklyn, Hudson, Dallas. There are things they will, this goes on. There is this woman, Spetlana, I can't think of her last name, who really, yeah, who has really been instrumental in making the communities work together. You know, I mean, there's a lot of shared information and that.
Are you looking for... Come join us. I know, there's plenty of seats. Just don't talk too much. What's your name?
I'm Chris Haren.
Chris, how are you?
Hi, I'm Chris Haren. Nice to meet you. I'm on the TMZ. Right.
Yeah, Chris also was part of a discussion group when we first started this.
Excellent. Well, you make an excellent observation about Greenwich. I mean, you know, you have a town that has an enormous group of people, hardworking group of people that aren't really connected with a legislative body. You know, it's a, you know, what they're hoping for is a public-private partnership in effect. But the private part of that is very robust and enduring, and they're able to do a lot of legwork that we don't have the capability of doing.
Right. I think they do have a sustainability committee, and they're working to a sustainability committee similar to ours.
Okay. One of the key challenges is having a workable enforcement strategy. I don't remember the community, but one of them started out with the police enforcing the rule, and the police came and said, you know, this is not a good use of our officer's time. People don't like doing this, we don't do it effectively or well.
Right.
And so they decided to find, put the code enforcement function in something other than the police department. So I think that one of the things that we, and I know that Liam Karlikowski, I'm sure he would be a good team player if we backed him, but he doesn't come into this really excited about being responsible. They do have already some responsibility, but I don't think anything is, do you?
I think I told you that with one of these proposals, the citizens that were complaining had the opportunity, were encouraged to write the Conservation Commission in the town, and then the Conservation Commission handled the complaints. So again...
You love that.
I just wanted to add, I was looking at the Bedford ordinance that just got passed, and they're giving a fine of $250,000. So even though what you're saying may be the case, it would be revenue for the town. And, you know, I don't know, I haven't done a study, I haven't asked Bedford, they're very new, like I haven't asked these 26 questions to town, how much money's been generated from writing? So that's something to bring up, that there is enforcement influence, and I understand it, but then there's also like potential revenue, kind of like parking fees.
Yeah.
Or even such a good brand, but often enough to be good enforcement. Okay, that's... Yeah, that's a valid reason. Based on acreage or, you know. Yeah, I don't know how they determine. Yeah. The Westport passed a really detailed approach in their proposal, they call up a hearing procedure for citations. I'll send it to you. So they could appeal and like, there's a whole key process? All across, and it comes down to, yeah, an assessment has been pursued, and then how, and an appeal, yeah, that whole thing. That's the first, it starts with a hundred dollars, and then a second offense, and first it's a warning, then there's a fine, and then there's a second offense fine, and it proceeds.
Yeah. I think that the biggest issue is whether the enforcement activity of initial citations, you know, whether that is a robust and thorough and, you know, insistent approach. I think the worst thing you could do is announce this whole big new initiative, and a year after you start it, there's no one's got the citation. And from then on, forever, everybody totally ignores it.
Well, what about the noise? I once asked for a record of anyone who had appealed for a noise citation. And I never got any information, so I'm not sure that there has been, but maybe you can find out. So then they say, you asked the police department? No, I didn't ask the police department. I went through, I think Chris went through, I think Chris's like, Ms. Office or something, Pam Flynn was, I was gonna look it up and get back to us on that. So you asked how many people had called the police because of the noise? It's a no issue, yeah. So I haven't seen anyone.
I think your question was more how many people actually have been cited and fined for noise than how many complaints.
Well, it was, I, you know, I don't know. That's an interesting baseline to look at.
I'm sure there have been complaints because of loud parties and things, and we've seen that in the game tonight.
Yeah.
Whether people are actually on it for it is another struggle.
Well, what I gathered is that... Using the party example, that these things are resolved informally, where the police have to talk to the families. It's sort of worked out without a formal process. So that, I think in terms of things that are as disruptive and dangerous that they're really allowed, you know, high school party, you know, it's not that they're ignored, it's just that they're not handled in a formal process.
Right. There are other charges that come up, it's not that they get a violation, nothing's always worth it.
Right, there's always something.
Little Harris to bear to them. Find you jail.
But whatever's going on now, if we had an aggressive, you know, ordinance that really restricted use, then I would imagine there would be more issues of complaints, and it would be more real, does the police department really follow through, or who does?
Right, right. Well, I don't know, in my, in this little recommendation that I sent out, I think you might have under one of those with the neighbors you neighboring, that first we would create, I mean, you create an awareness of the issue. You just can't, you know, say, oh, this is up to the community that, you know, you can't use gas leaf blowers, but you need to create an awareness. And then one of the things that I think is very, would be very helpful is a neighbor to neighbor guideline, you know, like if you want to go to your neighbor and, you know, give them information on what, you know, the hazards and how much it, you know, is disturbing to the neighborhood, et cetera.
Well, we worked a little bit on a, update the New Canaan Blight Ordinance. And the basic model there is a neighbor complains. The complaint goes to not the police, but an enforcement officer. In this case, it's Brian Platts. But he, and he's a busy man, he only has, he only gets three, four a year. And most of them can be resolved informally. So this would be, I think, exponentially bigger than that. But there is a process that doesn't require involvement of the police.
Yes.
It also occurred to me that...
I think, you know, I think it'd be worth trying, or at least having it as an alternative to, you know, calling, you know, the police or whatever, you know, with your issues. Yeah, I think it could create, you know, angry neighbors. Yeah, I think researching other towns, like these 26 towns in West, or who enforces, like we don't have the data really to really ponder it. So I think, and then if we did have the data, we could have another workshop, we got that far, where we could ask people what they would, what they're asking.
Right, well, that's a good segue, Linda, into, so my next page is entitled "Possible Non-Legislative Initiative", and that doesn't reflect a value judgment. It's saying that a lot of what I'm reading and what Linda's generated from Conservation Commission are things that could be done without the involvement of the Town Council, or intended with the Town Council, but could generate independently. Why don't I just give the topic headings, and then you can flush it out if you'd like. One is, as you said, is create awareness, enlist affinity groups, call the symposium to do all that. You want to say more about that?
Well, in the commission, we discussed various events. And I think these have been discussed before, like a no-momay, dark nights. I think we might have had some kind of an event for dark nights, low electric days, and quiet neighbor quiet days. Those were some of the things we discussed. But then I, there are, you know, community, you know, we could sponsor community presentations and training with experts. The American Green Zona Alliance Act that actually has an online course for like $140, that, $139, I think, that people can take so that they learn how to be, you know, manage their landscape, or landscapers can get certification for not... or landscapers can get certification for not very much money, really. Um, we can have, you know, I think that the planet New Canaan already has been promoting better land care guidance on how, because that part parcel of of as you change your, the way that you maintain your lawn with your electric equipment, you can also then change your lawn lawn care practices to be more environmentally. Uh, we could do some community research, you know, research tends to raise awareness when you send things out to people, you know, make some thing about it, like you were talking about, you know, questions that actually were informative, questions that inform as well as survey. I did speak to the Greenwich people again today about their questionnaire and how that evolved. Um, so we would, we could certainly use some of those questions if we decided to do that. But I would really recommend that we raise awareness and create awareness before we send out any kind of survey.
There you go, yeah.
So those are just some of the things, you know, and definitely think about the long range, you know, as we move forward, we can, you know, think of a long range plan. And as, as our plan, whatever we would propose or whatever we would think about, certainly the market is moving with us, so that would be.
I would think, and from a lot of things that Kim has said about that is um there is a wealth of information that I think could turn people around if they knew it and understood.
Yeah, maybe, Linda, I don't know if you can talk a little bit about Quiet Communities in Exa have this partnership and they come into the communities.
I did speak to Christina at Quiet Communities last week and she has, they can provide uh speakers and consultants to come into your community and of course, they've been giving consulting throughout the United States to all these communities who, who wish to do, you know, similar.
Do they? For lack of a better phrase, do they promote electric or is it more?
Their, their, their mantra, her mantra, I'm using the word mantra, was that they want to present a fair fairness and equity and balance to all the constituents in the town. Um, and that's how you should really approach your long range, short range or long range plan.
So they don't presuppose that
Yeah.
that like, that they promote, that a community should promote electric?
No, but they have all sorts of, of information and statistics, metrics on, on conversions.
Do they have a process where they can measure the air quality? There's something called health and I don't get.
She said that they could come in and do baseline measurements for before and then after certain uh legislation or certain restrictions have been passed.
I don't, yeah, and then I like the concept of the Aga Park, Agza Park.
Agza.
And Tiger, I don't know if you're, is Tiger on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, there's a place that Southampton has, their town hall is an Agza Park, so it's only maintained by electric. So, I mean, our town hall lawn is very small. We have at least one electric leaf blower and one electric mower, I don't know, but I mean, and so I think there's no Agza Parks in Connecticut, we would be the first one, am I right, Linda?
I don't know, I haven't.
I, I don't think that there are. And it basically just says this, this piece of grass or this land gate is maintained with only electric equipment. So it's just a nice designation to have, regardless of whether you do ordinance or not, it's just a way to kind of move with the technology that you're talking about.
I think they started it with, they had all sorts of events around around the implementation of this is what we're going to do and then they have demonstrations of electric equipment and, you know, they sort of kind of, it's like an first day.
I don't believe in giving Tiger Man a softball, okay? Ask Tiger, would you be willing to go green for the town hall lawn?
You gotta start from the baby steps. If memory serves, at our last meeting, Tiger had told us, and Tiger, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that much of your equipment, or at least some of your equipment, is already battery.
Not much, not much, no.
No, not one.
Wrong statement.
How much Tiger is, is electric? How many blowers and how many gas?
Not many, we just, we just bought two, two new electric chainsaws and one new electric blower, but we're nowhere near much, we're nowhere near even a ten percent status. We uh, we're still testing everything that's out there, trying to see exactly what would work. We uh, we bought a backpack blower for the highway department to use in the mornings when we blow out the sidewalks in the downtown area and uh while it's not only remarkably more heavier, heavier than a, than a gas-powered one, even for that amount of work for an hour or two, it's taken two to three batteries at least to uh, to do that work. So, you know, for me to set myself up to do one is I gotta set myself up for all, I'm not really there yet, to be honest with you.
Well, I think the concept here is, is headlines, you, you, you know, in, in Southampton, they feel like a very prominent park, energize the community, you have these electric lawn, not just gas blowers, and by the way, you Conservation Commission has really been focusing beyond just leaf blowers, right?
Right.
So, but in, in Southampton, they had, you know, these big fancy green lawnmowers that were all electric and they had the mayor riding around and so the whole point of it was education, awareness.
Right.
Uh, and, and so, no, we wouldn't give you a small lawn tiger, we'd actually, you know, do something at least like Meat Park for Christ's sake, you know?
That would be wrong, I wouldn't be able to do it, so.
I, I have, I have. Oh, sorry.
I can't myself, set myself up for failure, Tom, you know?
Yeah.
Sorry, the uh, what I would, what I would prefer is for us to continue to do what we're doing, which is we continue to test every single type of product that's out there, whether it's equipment, materials, different processes, you know, and uh you know, I trust our judgment and how we can move forward most effectively and efficiently for the town. You want to do something on the town side for the residents? We solely support that or we wholly support that, but I, I can't say that you know, Meat Park, give me Meat Park and I'll do it in electric and I can do it as well as I can with a, with a gas, with our gas operations, you know? I think it's gonna set us up for failure.
That makes a lot of sense.
It's not what you want to have happen.
I have, I have a lot that's point two-five acres, we have a Black and Decker with two batteries, we're able to do it in forty minutes, so I, I don't think Meat Park would be great, but I mean, literally, town hall is not that much green, it would be a nice aspirational goal, but.
It doesn't sound like you're serious, though, is what I'm.
No.
Ken, I, I think it would be interesting to find out, you know, I think it's great to reach out to the community and educate the community, I think that's very smart. I'm, I wonder how many people in New Canaan take care of their own lawns versus have a landscaper do it and thus how many people are going to educate themselves but then also reach out to their landscapers? I mean, I have a landscaper come, so that's an extra step of like going to them and either providing the equipment for them or asking them to have that equipment. So how do we reach out to landscaping companies, which I would guess is a lot of people in this town have landscapers and don't do their own, I don't know.
And the land, right, and the landscapers are not going to be impressed by a demonstration project or a symbolic gesture.
Well, apparently, and already there are quite a few companies now that are green only.
It's becoming.
Because it's, because it's profitable.
Yeah.
Gives you a market.
We educate consumers in New Canaan that, A, it's not is it affordable? Is it, does it cost, is it cost comparable to what you're getting now? And B, does it do as good of a job on your yard? I mean, those to me seem like the critical thing, I mean, you're trying to reach average consumers. You know, you can, right, yeah.
You're trying to reach out to people who do their own lawn care, but you're also trying to reach out to, there are a lot of people in the town who don't do their own lawn care. Much to my thought, it's such a correlation, or are they very interested or in it all? Now, I, I tend to be somebody who's really, you know, focused on sharing, so making all those changes. So there is definitely a divided group. Um, and, but I think, but people are, people are very interested in pesticides, you know, and, and, and more organic lawn care.
Sure.
And the electric, the, the companies that are promoting themselves as electric and environmental also promote themselves as organic lawn care. And that's the way they really get their business. We had a a lawn care professional come in and present to us, he's been, he was instrumental in the, in the quiet yards uh project, so he presented and he told us about the market there, so I mean, I'm sure you'd be happy to, yeah, come in, but there are a number of, of landscape companies now who provide that service.
Which is, I think, good, and I mean, the one thing that I hear most about the gas-powered leaf blowers is the noise and that there's six of them on a two-acre property, you know, blowing at each other.
Yeah.
And so it's the number and the, of them, um, and the noise factor is sort of the universal.
Right, and there could be two or three all getting their yards out at the same time if you live in now. And they'll be coming in serial, and that's a landscaping company, that's not somebody doing their, their yard, right, so um
I, I just wonder how we bridge that.
The thing that I like about Linda is the Quiet Communities in the Exa is they have a class for landscapers and I think it's by label and it's very inexpensive, it's like a hundred and eighty dollars for like seventy or eighteen sessions of how to use the equipment, they also have Quiet Communities in Exa have these symposiums where they take out all the equipment
Right.
and talk about the latest, you know, and they have landscapers come that are all electric and talk about the business aspect of it. Um, because I know consumers are conscious that it could be more expensive.
Yeah.
Um, so that's also an issue to keep in mind as well. Um, so, but I think, I think Quiet Communities has done this when they consult with the communities.
Right.
They certainly bring the landscapers in, it's not like we would decide something without talking to people who's.
So that, the fairness and equity.
Exactly.
You know, we can't impose something that is unrealistic from a business standpoint.
Right.
On these small businesses.
Well, if a lot of what we read and hear about the beauty of organic green, uh all the Quiet Communities, what we hear is that it makes, it's, it's no more expensive and it's just as effective, if that's true, it shouldn't be hard to sell that to a homeowner.
Right.
For a landscaper to go up and say, you know, since the organic guys would have a hell of a market edge right now. Because they could knock on your door and say, how would you like to get the same stuff done and not hear nearly as much noise? And, and not have toxic fumes and, and healthy environment, so in, in some ways, hopefully, the market can accomplish a lot of what we're.
Right.
I think that this, this lead by example, which is the Meat Park thing that we're throwing out there. Down on, or whichever.
Tiger doesn't like Meat Park.
Well, either way, this, the sense I got from the, from the speakers that, in the video that we were, was is that you had, in one case, a mayor and in another case, a councilman or whatever, but I think there was a sense that it was a way to um to, to get some political points out of, out of being green, you know, you know, that, that it was politically smart to sound like you understood the environment and you were gonna act on it. Yeah, I'm not sure that it was, that it necessarily parlayed or that it even was ever meant to parlay into persuading people to act differently as much as to acknowledge the, the green cred of the mayor who put the project in.
Well, in some cases, it was a political move, but, you know, politics should definitely try to build, I think should try to build on the health and welfare of their community.
Kind of like the lead by example, but lead by example, aspirational, good for the environment, good for the health of the people in the building. It wasn't just one, you know, I don't think it was a manipulative thing, it was, but they were right around it, so when you watch these videos, they're like, wow, you know, so it might have come across and didn't, but I think they really do care about the town.
But I think, I think this goes back to your point, though, and I don't know your name, but. Leading by example, this will get, get into paper and some people will notice that they care about green things. The vast majority of the town don't care, look at, or the vast majority of the lawn workers who live in in Milford or Norwalk or Bridgeport are not even gonna know about it, uh, the people who employ them are not gonna care. Uh, and are not gonna change, so I, I think that leading by example is fine for a minority of people who will actually probably be aware of that. Uh, it will not deal with the majority of the problem, which is the lawn companies that people employ and the conditions under which the people have to work. So we're not, and I think we need to be very careful what we're telling them, we're not gonna tell them you can't use them at all, because you, you will need them involved. Uh, you're not, you're just gonna say, look, do you need to use them all summer long to blow grass clippings? Uh, and when people are sitting outside and trying to enjoy their properties, do you really need to have four people blowing grass clippings in July? Uh, and that's the question that, I mean, I think that we need to address and that the legislation needs to address.
I think that's a great, the thing that I liked about the Bedford Wardens is they said there's seasonal bans and then each year the seasonal bans get shorter periods of time. But you can use electric anytime you want. So they, they, you know, you could do grass clippings with electric, that was their particular angle. So it was kind of like nudging people to go electric, but it was also allowing people to do their fall cleanups and their spring cleanups. So I thought that was a little interesting.
You know, you're not going to utopia immediately, we're just saying, let's, let's have a balance between people's convenience and also people's ability to enjoy their outside life in the summer.
Maria has her hand raised.
I think Christina might have had her hand up first, I don't know if she put it.
Sorry, Christina, it fades, fades right into, I didn't see that.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Sorry if we didn't notice earlier.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Marie, I'll go after you. All right, um, I, I kind of, I'm looking at the agenda and I'm not sure we can get to, you know, if the town itself couldn't follow a regulation to transition to electric, I'm not sure we should even be considering making a regulation for homeowners and, you know, I, I just think we shouldn't even regulate. I like all the ideas about awareness and education and leading by example, but um to go to take that extra step to actually make a, you know, a rule about gas-powered leaf blowers, I think there's a whole lot of research that would need to be done before even going in that direction. So, that's, I don't know if this was the right time because I know, you know.
Perfect, Christina.
Um, I just wanted to say that to direct the complaints to Brian Platts would be a mistake, I think his department is overwhelmed and we should find a better way for people to communicate with the town when there is a concern. Um, I haven't heard much about this other than the Conservation Commission raising it up, but we're not in the EPA's dominion to be able to execute a law or to suggest that there's a negative action or reaction, I think we all know it and I think we're pretty smart about it. But raising a concern to the residents in New Canaan saying to be neighborly, to start the blowers after a certain time may get you more traction than trying to uh put in fines or regulations, which really I don't think are going to be enforceable at the end of the day.
Breila.
Hi, yeah, I, I agree, I agree with what Christina is saying, I, I, I still think it's not that it's brand new, but it's still new and I think education is the way to go and encouraging people to be neighborly or um, just letting people know what the potential health effects are, I think would go a long way, I also think I'm personally a big fan of, of the carrot rather than the stick. And if there are ways to incentivize people doing the right thing, I think that is a better way to go and, and we have, um we have a great partner, potential partner in town, Whedon Derry, uh, who I think would partner with us to offer like maybe electric equipment or like promote it or I think they would be pretty excited about working with us to try to encourage folks to maybe use those types of equipment and, and to offer it. Um, to offer, to sell it, so it might be an interesting partnership we could, um, we could consider.
Now, I would like to raise a more um, direct question, and that is, when the leaf blowers are on, I would have to say a great percentage of the landscapers that I see blowing leaves are blowing it from the neighbor to the other neighbor, meaning that they may take it off your property, but it's going to the neighbor's house, and I think that's a worse crime than the noise itself. So if we were going to look at blowers, I think that we should also emphasize the fact that your leaves belong in your property or they have to be, you know, carefully taken away. But um, that is a common thing that I see when I'm driving around town and I don't find it acceptable, but annoying.
Yeah, I think the, the larger the property, the more likely it is. Yeah, I think the, the larger the property, the more likely it is to happen because no one's watching them. When no one's watching. It's just gonna blow right over the fence. I've seen that. Or on the road. On the road, yeah. So Mark, what do you think? You there?
Yeah, sorry, Tom. I, I, I agree with, uh. With Rita and Christina and Maria, you know, education is better, uh, better first step. I prefer not to. Regulate. Cause I know there's probably greater hardships for people that are using them. In town, uh, and it is cost prohibitive. And, you know, for someone doing multiple. Homes in a day, you know, how many batteries are you gonna buy? So I, I just think, you know, self-awareness is, is the first step.
So then the question is, um. If that was the, the strategy, so basically the carrot approach. Uh, if that's the strategy, uh, do you guys think that? The town should put some money into that, like to help people who chose to transition from gas to electric? You know, to absorb some of the capital cost, uh, uh, you know. There might be businesses, I think there are other towns that actually have enlisted businesses than banks. Some banks, I think, they want, they're given, uh, low interest loans or zero interest loans for the transition.
Right.
Um. Uh, so there's no reason not to look into that.
Would they do so in, in the absence of a. An ordinance requiring that transition? Would they give?
I think so. Well, well, I don't know about it. Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm just curious.
I don't know, maybe, yeah, maybe it's five percent, but you know, but it, it wasn't captured in one of the presentations that they managed. That, that, they, they were successful in getting some stuff.
Yes.
And of course, there, there could be costs through an information campaign. I mean.
Yes, I did check, you know, um, consulting fees, which. You know, it depends on what we wanted.
What would a consultant? What would a consultant do?
Well, we would have to define what we want. I mean, they can, you know, they could, you know, definitely need a seminar or a symposium. Or if Agsa, American Green. Zone Alliance comes in, they have all sorts of demonstrations and programs that they can implement for us.
So one, one option would be that. If you guys wanna look more into that, I mean, whether you're on the commission or not, you know. Bring us a, a proposal of saying, here's what we wanna do and involve. X dollars or Y endorsement or whatever, you know.
Wow.
We could consider that. I, I don't know if it would be supported or not, but, uh. You, you don't know if you don't ask.
Right, right. So, okay. I think I. I would be, most likely I would, um, talk to some of the, um. You know, green, um, green organizations in town about sponsoring something.
Right.
Planet New Canaan, uh, we could work with them on sponsoring an event that would include land here, better land here practices. Um, and, you know, that would also include transitions to electric. That's, it's all land here. You know, that you, and it's how you take care of the property. I mean, I, I. From an environmental and health standpoint, um. To, you know, the animal, it, it just, you know, it's, it's good practices. And I think that, um. Planet New Canaan has already put on their blog. Um, information on better land care practices and. Information on asking for us.
Well, it's, it's certainly possible that there could be private businesses that, you know, would say, boy, this is good for our brand to, to support. To support.
And on earth day, you know, you have vendors come in, you have landscapers come in and, um, you know, promoting their, um. Their business. Um, and I'm sure that if, you know, if it's a, a marketing objective for. You know, if Chubby has a lot of equipment to sell and, you know, and if, uh, we, Jurnay wants to. To, um, start, nameless, I don't know, do they now? I don't know. I don't, I don't.
Seeing them, seeing it would be a good idea. There we have, I thought about that as well, but I can put it in there to see lawn mowers and. Locals, but maybe they can start to do that.
Yeah, should they? I mean, imagine they would partner with, with, um, with the town if, um.
Then make a proposal. I think, I'm sorry, I think just my one concern is that we keep. Which I think is a valid concern that we keep going back to the health issue, which is good and valid. But I do think one of the main. And it's the reason why you were, you've got involved in the first place is that it doesn't, we're not, we're still not really addressing the noise concern. You know, that so many of our neighbors have.
Yeah.
And I, I still think that we need to consider. Whether there's a seasonal or a time restraint that wants done. Um, because a seasonal restraint to some extent does that environmental impact. Um. And I think it does address, you know, the one, the one thing I have heard from townspeople with respect to. Leaf blowers in general. Is the noise problem. So to the extent that, you know, you know, whether we're swapping the electric for gas power or what have you. There's still a noise problem when you wanna sit outside and.
Yeah, I would just second that piece. I think, I mean, there's a little bit of a mission creep that I'm sensing here is that. Going back to your initial point, we don't know when the technology is going to change such that. Electric is going to be just the natural choice of cost and efficiency reasons. That is, that process is ongoing. We don't know how long it will take. So the point here is not to legislate that we, that people have to move from gas to electric. Uh, because the market will take care of that. Eventually, and probably, uh, about as fast as we could move in terms of the institutional support to make it happen. Uh, the point is to. Allow people to enjoy their property peacefully during the summer when they're outside.
And it's not just the people, it's the people who are working. They're kinda asleep during the day, at work night, or the people who are working at home, trying to go on Zoom meetings and things like that.
Yeah, so I think that to me, and I feel like we're. Well, people, they know that. They don't, they can't, you cannot really measure the health impact. Right. But people knows the noise.
Right.
So that, that would, that's your entry point.
And that is a health issue.
And I always, yeah. And the noise helps too. I think people were more aware of how bad the, the noise is.
Oh, I mean, I think, I get, I get texts about it constantly. And it's not something that's at the forefront right now because we're September and the rain for a week, but.
Right.
Um, when it starts up.
Yes.
It. I think people.
It's a couple of days to bring it.
Yikes. But the thing, yeah, it, because it's, you know, the fall, but spring and summer, it's. A constant drumbeat. What can we do about this leave? It's constant around people. And so I, you know, as much as I. Obviously care about the environment, as much as I. Those to me, when I look at it from a town council perspective and an ordinance perspective. When I think about, um. And it sort of solves some of the equity issues and the social justice issues, which I, I care about tremendously also too, but. I keep coming back to the noise issue because that's what people in this town. Can relate to mostly. That's what they care about. They're, they're not gonna, they might not have time for a presentation about. The carbon dioxide emission, the, the green and the, they care that when they go out to have dinner at night on a porch or lunch or whatever. They can't enjoy it because there's this town that'll leave blowers constantly. They can't have a phone call outside. They can't, whatever. So that's what I just kinda keep coming back to in, in all of these conversations. So I think we do need to. Think about addressing.
Yeah.
The most six orders that we got that I read were very specific and personal examples of people. Feeling burdened and oppressed by constant noise. So it's definitely out there and we're experiencing that.
So the, you know, so a lot of the communities that, well, not a lot of them, but some communities that started with really. Severe bans and restrictions. Found that they couldn't move forward. So they backed. That went back to, to, okay, let's just do seasonal and time break.
Yeah.
Um, and, and possibly number of leaf blowers per property size.
Yeah.
And I think if you, and that, and that, and that, you know, it's. You know, it's a nice, it, that would, that takes care, I mean, takes care of the environmental issues to a certain extent as well. I mean, as you, and then you can move forward as the market moves.
Yeah.
It's, it's a transition act.
Well, right.
We're talking about a transition. We're not talking about bans.
Right.
But I think that. I think the question that people would wanna understand better is. Are there ways through an education and awareness process that you could impact those? You know. As a first step before you get to legislation, is that productive or not?
I can only speak from my experience when I first started doing. You know, getting involved in this, I was appalled by the health. Issues and the environmental issues. I think I can probably just say, uh, you know, I could somehow filter out the, the noise myself and deal with it. But when I saw what it's all impact. On the social justice, on the health, the environment. Um. I was really moved. There will be other people who will be moved. Other people won't share.
No, I think you're right. I think people will be moved by that. I, I do.
By which?
I, I think you said, I agree with everything you just said, that there will be some people who will, like the noise is the initial entry point. And then you start to tell them about the health and environmental impacts and they go, oh my gosh. Awful. Yes, get rid of these things. And other people are going, right. Just want my, your boat nice. Like, I think, but I want to move, like, how do we fix, you know, or what can we do about it? It's just annoying, but. We had.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Uh, no, I was just thinking about the, uh, there are two things. Uh. Uh, you bring up the noise, but, but putting that aside for a second, just going back to what we were talking about before, um. I think two things could be interesting. To explore, um. For the health aspect, not necessarily the noise, which one would be, I don't know if there are any grants out there that we could. You know, avail ourselves to that could, um, help with incent, incentivizing folks to choose. Uh, electric over gas powered. Um, I also think just education, just offering a choice, like, um, getting a list of landscapers that are. That use electric versus. Gas and like literally putting it on New Canaan Moms and saying, here's your choice. Like you can, you can have these, these people are out there that don't use gas powered. I honestly think just that alone would drive. A conversion of some, to some extent. Um, in terms of noise, I think it's complicated because there's a lot of, uh, sources of noise market, um. Mark was at some point was mentioning generate, generators are noisy, lawn mowers are noisy. And blowers are not, you have a, you have like a very, they have a lot of different. Sources of noise. So how do you figure out? You know, do you just pinpoint, you know, blowers? Like, I think you just need to be careful about. How you might suggest some sort of, you know, regulation on. On noise, but I do agree it's an issue and I, and I agree that people care about it. I just. I just, we need to be cognizant of how we, how we address that.
So I'm, I just had this, this concept on my mind, what if you had a, um. Good neighbor. Campaign, whatever, that. That, that educated people and saying, you know, if you buy this, if you understand what we're saying here and we believe in it, here's why, I have experts and. Awareness campaigns and everything, but, but, you know, we're gonna have this. Basically voluntary guidelines that good neighbors would follow. You know, uh, hopefully some people would say, well. I mean, it's worth looking at. Cause it, you know, it, it seems to me there's, there's. If, if people aren't, aren't really thinking about. People, obviously they're hearing the noise, but I don't know that they're thinking about by what solution, what are the solution options? Now, may, probably would occur to people who abandoned their things, you know, but, uh, something that actually focuses on. Greater understanding and behavioral changes. And to, to me, the home run is that, is that somebody, uh, talks to the neighbor and said, have you talked to your landscaper? About the other options?
Right.
About following this, this preferred, preferred code of being a good neighbor. Because mine is doing X and Y and Z, you know, I mean, I, I think you could, you could accomplish an amazing amount. Especially as I say, if we're, if we're not more expensive, if we're just as productive and there wasn't a dramatic amount of inconvenience.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, I'm tempted to say, well, you know, is there a way to do that? Cause I. That, that one of the, and frankly, just to be honest. And Steve signed off, I think he probably agree with this, um. When, if, if and when we legislate these things, you know, uh. There's gonna be a little bit of a war. Along, along, you know, and the two people that we had to testify so far sort of characterized. The, the two main arguments on the con side. One is. Personal freedom, you know, I can do, you know, in, in the summer in fifteen minutes, I can clear. Leaf clippings off of, or long grass clippings off a long driveway. With a gas powered leaf blower that my husband has had and it's still pretty new. You know, we don't wanna buy anything new. You can do that in fifteen minutes.
Right.
Whereas if I go and sweep that, you know, it takes me four hours, whatever. I've been exaggerated, but, and then the other, the other perspective had to do with money. They said, they said. If you pe, you people are gonna impose a tax on me for caring for my property. Those were the two things, but because, because, well, what her point was effectively a tax. That by increasing the cost of. Caring for lawn attractive.
I see.
The, the, the ordinance is, is effectively taxed.
Yeah.
And so tho, those are the things that we're gonna hear from more than one person. So. One of the things that I'd like to be really sure that we've eliminated the. The other alternatives that might also be effective, uh, before we get into.
I think we have to be very, very careful about the words we use. In, in discussing this and publicly. You know, it's not banned, it's not restrictions, it's not legislation. It's, you know, it's just. Transition, balance, fairness, health, you know, all the positive aspects. But to be very careful a lot too.
Well, if there's.
You know.
If there's a position.
There are certain words that just are going, people are going to walk in.
If there's a period where it's all voluntary, you don't.
Yeah.
Have that.
You wouldn't.
Concern.
No, I mean, I, I'd like to just, I mean, I'm kind of a data person, so we're a small, very small group of people. We all live in different parts of town. Have different sensibilities, gas, like, like, I feel like we don't know from the public what they want. And I feel like our job, you know, being elected is to represent the majority. I mean, I want to represent everyone and hear everyone's voice, but it does come down to. What the majority of the town wants in terms of their quality of life. And so I feel like when we, if we did get a consultant, could we do a survey, a townwide survey? And asking people, you know, on a scale from one to ten, how much does this bother you? These are some options of solution. What do you prefer? Okay, like if anyone says, well, we wanna be, you know, inspirational and not mandate anything, or do you prefer banning? I just feel like we don't really know, you know, and, and I think it's our duty to, to kind of go get to that level and get that, um, data. And then have a discussion based on what we see as the result.
Well, what should we do? Should we do some education awareness first and then as people?
I think that makes sense because if you don't know, like you said, you will move by the health effects. And most people don't have time to be, you know, these long CO2, how much emissions. But something that's easy to digest and maybe fun. Um, kind of learn about, you know, different options and then do the survey, I think.
The less general, the less general knowledge there is in the community. The less useful a survey would be.
Exactly.
So you, hopefully you get the knowledge and you get, turn this into a. You know, something that, that a lot of people are, are discussing and it becomes an issue.
And I hope when people learn that. Twenty-six. Towns in Westchester have effectuated some sort of restriction or whatever, or have regulated this in some way. I think that's really. Impressive.
It's a pretty.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty interesting data point, understanding that many of those towns are not. Terribly comparable to New Canaan, but when you see a town like Bedford, which is, you know, right there, you're like, that's pretty.
Empowerage is also, um, in the process, I think, and smalls will have something as well.
I think getting that information somehow packaged and out to the community is super important. Some kind of, like, not only education, but health, but like what are, what surrounding communities.
That we're not an outlier here, considering that.
Yes.
That this is not, we're not breaking the ground here. This, we're not going. You, you, this is not something that we're cooking up.
Right.
So just, let's see, support that. And how then would we have that education? Can we have a forum in the library, have something on Zoom? Uh, have something in pages of the advertiser in the New Canaan site where there's a, where there's a transcript, for example, or something online. Uh, where they can do recordings, uh, so maybe, I, I, I think. Yeah, education sounds fantastic. It just. I'm gonna need to push it in and, and maybe. Right.
Those are all great ideas. Just, you don't have to disseminate the information. We just need, you know, like there's a consultant that does this and it's done at another. At Bedford, use that consultant. To, to raise awareness before they bend into any legislation.
Um, they, they just, um, I think they do. Um, they, they just, um, I think they used to act at, you know, the, the green. Uh, I did ask, um, I think that, um, there were just different people with different expertise, um, and quiet communities has, has been consulting with some of them. Not, um, you know, but then it was, it depend on what we would want.
Right.
Um, and some of these other, uh, communities are so willing to share, uh, their experience, their information, their research, whatever, you know, and they would be happy to work with us. So we may not even need to pay, pay a consultant to answer your point. The acts of, uh, organization though, you know, with their training and their demonstrations and all their metrics, I think is, would be really valuable.
Yeah.
But if I put to the side, the social question and the social justice, but, but that aside for a moment, just get really nitty gritty about, we're a committee of the town council. The question that I would ask is, are we ready to legislate? And I'd love to hear what people say about that. It's not, you're not, if, if you agree with that, if you say, no, we're not ready to legislate, that doesn't mean that you're not supporting education awareness, you know, dialogue, brainstorming, it's just that.
Or perhaps a future.
I need, well, what, what as a committee and what as a town council, you know, are we ready to legislate? Cause it affects our process, we need to know that. Anybody? Hillary said no.
Well, I mean, I would, I would probably be, if we were, I'm on the fence. I would consider legislating some amendment to our existing noise ordinance.
Like ours?
Yeah, hours, seasons, or days or something. I think that would be, that's, I, I don't think that that's making a judgment or, I, I don't know, I think that would be something we could do in the next couple of months. Uh, that would not be terribly controversial. Um, that would be sort of the only step legislatively, I would be, I would consider taking. But otherwise, I think I'm on board with it.
So actually, you'd say we are ready to legislate.
I would think so, I think we could do that.
How about everybody else? My opinion would be that, you know, not the, the council, but that we are almost ready to legislate. I think if we can do the education, we can get the docs, get these people, quiet communities to come in and, uh, get the information out there. That people understand that there is an alternative, if they don't have to sit, uh, sit there out there and try to have lunch on their deck and listen to leaf blowers. Uh, that, uh, I think then you could move ahead with legislation in, in a six month timeframe.
Yeah. I'd like to see a public hearing, we're ready to legislate and I don't just.
We like vote next Sunday, like within the next.
No, I totally, I, I would like to see like more like a public hearing and, and, and then make a decision. Cause I don't feel like, like the meetings that we've had have not been like on, on the books for months or, you know, meets for people to know about it, or haven't really been. I mean, I know you tried to do some reach out and publicize it, but I don't think they've been like in the newspaper and talk about coffee and things like that. So I think we could, could get a lot more information just from kind of be noticing the meetings for a long period of time and inviting people and giving public comment. So I feel like I'd like to, I'd like to hear from that. Certainly, I don't wanna kick the can down the road, Hillary, and I think you're right, like, if we can give people some relief that's reasonable, I'm open to that and in, in a, in a timely manner, so.
What I, I'm sorry, wait, just real quick. In my mind, if we divi- if we enhance our knowledge of the community, of the costs of the, of the process, you know, through, a first phase where it's education and awareness, I'll feel a lot more capable of legislating at that point. Right now, I feel like I'm legislating in the dark, but that's where I am.
Well, we have heard from the public.
Well.
I mean, that's.
When there was a ground smell of interest, we had heard from the public.
I don't think, I don't think that's really true. I don't think we've had a town council hearing or we haven't publicized these meetings to invite people. So I, I don't.
You know, if you bring up the topic, people are very, um, anti-noise and anti the leaf blowers.
Yeah.
But I don't think they also don't know how to proceed. What can they do? Where can they go, you know, to, uh, register their opinions?
Yeah, and put it on their calendars and that they know for three weeks, we're gonna have a period.
Really?
So I agree with how you were all, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So I agree with how you're portraying this and Hillary, I, I agree with you, there, there, I think there are two issues here. I think there's noise and then there's the health. And I do think people do have an opinion on noise. To be honest, I haven't heard a lot of people come, coming up to me complaining, but if I ask the question, there's a lot of opinion. And I wonder if that's a very finite, you know, if we wanted to get a survey, we could easily get, um, public reaction to that one question, which is, is noise an issue? You know, are leaf blowers, and not just leaf blowers, but like in general. Um, whether it's generators or a leaf blower or whatever it is, I think you could get a very easy, fast reaction in terms of, you know, whether or not the community is concerned about it or not. And then I think you can, I, I think in that case, we are clear to be able to either enact legislation or not that is specific to noise. In terms of, um, health, I think we're, it's a longer, I think it's a phased approach. I think it's, I think it's, we're longer out, um, and I think we need to start with education and, and then proceed from there. So that's my opinion.
Maria.
I think, um, I don't think we need to make any more regulations. I, I do think, I mean, that we do have a town noise ordinance. And I'm not sure if people are not following it. Uh, and I, I do think there's a big difference between in-town and, you know, two and four acre zoning. Um, like I've never really, I haven't heard people complain about noise. I live in a two-way acre area. But I do think, you know, those of us who do put on the leaf blower and do some of our own yard work, you know, I, I'd be worried that the hours that would be restricted would be the only hours that working families could do it. So I don't think we need, I think we have to stick with education and awareness and, and maybe have, you know, neighborhood, um, groups get together and kind of agree on things in their own neighborhood. I just don't feel that we need to make a new rule about it. And I think too, um, this doesn't really get you, I think electric leaf blowers make a lot of noise too. So, you know, the sound is one thing. I mean, I think ideally in the way down the road, people would prefer that people don't even, you know, they let their lawns go wild. I know that's kind of a movement. And I don't think that's gonna work here. Um, so the sound, I don't know, I don't think we need any more rules about it, honestly.
Let, let me be more specific. Should, should this be an active, right now, whatever, for the next six months or whatever time frame, should this be an active project of the town council or this committee? Or is it something, or is it something that we should encourage to happen in a non-legislative framework? And, and then, you know, if the demand rises, then we could, we could come in, you know, later on, I.
I, I, that, the second choice. Support it, support the education in the community, but I don't think it needs to be on our, um, docket right now.
I mean, I think Linda suggested a steering committee. I kind of feel like if we're gonna get the education, it would be helpful to have someone out there on, or part of, or a couple of people as part of this and we work in tandem. Um, and then, you know, see what happens, that's, that's just my thought, rather than having to be completely outsourced and then us. I mean, I feel like we need to be educated, all of us, including myself. You know, I, I don't know as much as Linda knows, like, so like for us to make decisions and just kind of come in six months later and say, okay, what are we gonna do? When, when we don't even know what all citizens, you know, or many that are gonna learn from the education effort. So I, I don't feel like we should drop it and then come back to the six months.
Well, of course, any, all town council members could be involved in the process. Uh, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any difficulty with that. It's just as a town council, as a committee, are, are we, is this part of our, the way we legislate? You know, to be responsible for, trying to, I, I, I really don't wanna be positions here, but there, there's a difference between, having a public awareness, you know, event that we're all educated from and, and we, you know, learned from that. There's a difference between that and, and sort of, you know, prodding the issue, you know. Do we like noise? You know, do we all like noise? Well, let's have a big meeting about whether we like noise. It's just, you know, I.
I think it depends on what you consider your remit as a town council. I mean, I would argue that the town council is responsible for the health and wellbeing of the town. Yeah, and so like none of you quantify what this is worth the town. Like if you look at twenty-six other towns, Bedford's a richer town than we are. Southampton's a much nicer town than this town. I don't wanna put down people. Spins some of the towns, so these are towns that look a lot more carefully at, at how experiences that their towns are consumed, you know, and I think New Canaan's a much more independent, you know, I wanna cut my lawn, I wanna, you know, pour my gas and, and if I spill gas on the lawn, it's okay, it's my, it's my dirt, doesn't matter if it hits the aquifier. You know, I don't care. So I think there's a, there's a, you know, there's a town, there's individual rights versus town good. And I think that's the rule of government, right? It's the, the tragic that comes, like if you let everyone screw up their own property and I'm on the planning zoning, I can tell you that rights actually matter.
Yeah.
Um, cause I deal with this three times a month now. Um, so I, I think it is, I think, I would argue that it is your remit to go ahead and look after health and safety of the town. And so I, I think this is, and I think there's, you know, continuum, right? Like you swing the pendulum all the way here and everyone's, you know, wearing a certain clothing and walking down the street a certain way, right? And you swing the pendulum the other way and it's, it's, you know, people are shooting each other. So I guess my point is that I think that there is a middle ground where you say, you know, there's a big talk about whether we should have pesticides on the children's blankets. And that was a discussion. This is very similar. And this is about like, how important, in Peter our quality, how important are the workers' help to the town? Versus people's independence of doing what they want. And it's.
I totally agree.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a continuum and, and I, I mean, our town is not a leader in terms of environmental approaches. We're, you know, I've dealt with that a lot. And so that's fine. I, I don't, you know, we're, we're very much like, okay, let's see what the rest of the towns do and then follow them, right? Like, so, you know, Westport's a very advanced town in terms of the way they look at, you know, observation and all that. We're, we're not, and that's okay. Uh, but I do think that to close the door and say, hey, we're gonna pump this down is, is, it's sort of foolish. I mean, I, I think to look at toxic conditions and, and like quality of, of life as being not the remit of the town, I think that's pretty exclusionary in what you look at your remit.
Tell us what you really think.
It's all relevant.
I know, you know, so. If there was ever, you know, anything for me to put my support behind it, help my community, it was to, you know, spearhead this initiative. I was just in California, um, you know, recently, you know, they've been very, um, in the forefront of, um, of reducing, you know, their air quality. If they hadn't taken the measures that they had already with all the fire and all the, and, you know, the pollution from the fire. You know, there are people that in San Francisco that can't get, um, appointments with pulmonologists. You know, they're so backed up, you know, for light onset asthma, you know, this is, this is a serious issue. And I, I agree with all that and taking all, for the points in hand, understanding the, our town and where we are, that, the thing I've been saying behind is the way to get that across to a lot of people and sell it to a lot of people is through noise. Because if you amend an ordinance that already exists about noise, you accomplish a lot of the other things that, people, to your point, people don't, some people don't care if they spill gas on their own yard and it gets into the water source, like.
Right.
Because they're.
No, I get it. Mine's not having H P, but you, but if you, I understand that, that the environmental aspect is incredibly important to me. But what I'm saying is if you can find a way to, to package it that is appealing to the widest number of people, nobody wants to sit on their back porch in their six or seven or eight noise machine blowing in the middle of summer. They just don't.
Yeah.
And so if you can accomplish what you want and have the secondary and tertiary benefits of that, be reduce CO2, a great impact on the workers, and you sold it to the most number of people, I think you've accomplished the remit of town council and you've sold it to the greatest number of people in our town. That's, you know, my only point. It's, that's part of our job too, is to, is, is to accomplish the most. And, and satisfy. I mean, I think that we all want, I mean, I, it pains me to see, I saw a guy leaf blowing in a McDonald's parking lot the other day when I was feeding my children garbage. Um, and I was like, there's nothing for him to blow and he had no protective gear on and he had a, a gas, a leaf blower. I mean, it's just insane, the number of people you see using these things to clear any number of debris from the thing. Um, so I just, yeah, I, I kind of agree with Chris that this is within our wheelhouse. And I, I agree with Chris too, we went to the same college. Again, I'm not gonna say, we'll say later. Um, but I, I do think Linda had told me that some towns just goes through the health department, it doesn't go through a legislative body. So I do think that, I, I do think that, you know, us trying to assure that people have the best quality of life and it is a health issue is in our, you know, our mandate or not mandate, that it's part of what we should be doing. Hillary, you have a good point, it's a process, like, so how do you get people to kind of comply with that? Even if they don't care about, you know, so much about health issues or the environment. And I think the Bedford, um, I really, the Bedford ordinance, I think, is really good at using the carrot. So the carrot is that you can use your gas, your, uh, electric power leaf blower anytime you want, but there are seasonal bans. So it reduces the health risk for people blowing, like someone puts pesticide on their lawn and it's dry out in the summer. And a leaf blower goes on that where there is gas or it's blowing everywhere. So Christina talked about people blowing, you know, leaves on the sun on the lawn. What about blowing pesticides and airborne volatile chemicals into your yard? You know, like where do we draw the line in terms of how do we keep everyone safe?
Right.
So I, I don't think we should get this hand down the road and I think we should stay involved and, and, you know, just be, um, I, I don't know if we wanna be like Southampton, but certainly with the quality of life for residents and the health of residents and of children and pets and elderly and everyone listening.
Just to follow up on that too, it's the quality of life issue, which then will affect the interest that people can move to this town by property in this town. Uh, to the extent that, that is aware, that people are aware that this town cares about people's ability to enjoy that property, their ability to, to live safely, uh, healthily in that property. And so that's, that supports our property value, that supports our tax business.
There, there was in one of the meetings that topic came up there, some of the New Yorkers that lived in the quiet suburbs. Had you in your roof doors, perverse in the sirens.
And amended, right?
What I mean, to have a fancy lawn is a, like, a manly meaning.
Quiet.
Quiet.
For.
Quiet community.
And so, I mean, you know, whether it be a beautiful downtown or quiet downtown, it's, it's a quality of our vision.
Well, I just need to know as chairman, does, does this, does this committee stay actively engaged in this process? Or do we take a hiatus and come back to it after there's been something, you know, more, more happening on the education and awareness side of it? Does that make sense? Is that, is that a fair question?
I mean, I think what about funding, like.
What would be compelling to this committee? You mentioned getting public input, so like, you know, if, if, if the, the committee are going to do research and bring it to the team.
I wanna know what, so that you mentioned, um, property values. I, I, I really would like to know if people agree with it, you know. I can assume that they would agree with it.
I mean, there's certain things, I mean, like for example, I mean, um, I mean, there's certain things, I mean, like for example, I mean, um. I'm a beige pedestrian advocate, right? Living from, I grew up in Manhattan. My wife said they'd live to suburbs as long as I could walk to their coffee. And so I've been along. Uh, I love it when we put the main sidewalk in because I felt like that was a great amenity. And and there's actually on like Zillow, there's something called the Walk Score. Which is rated from zero to one hundred and it actually impacts the value of the property depending on how how the Walk Score is. Um, I don't know if there's a quick one noise score. Um, but that's kind of what you're asking, right? Like, yeah, is there a, is there a value associated with it given? Quality of this, like obviously schools impact, um.
No.
She's saying, is there a health quality element to a property value? So the quality of water, quality of air, is that where you're going with that?
Well, I was. I I think, I think specifically we were talking about noise. Uh, yeah, so the noise is part of health, right?
Yeah, noise and and toxins basically, right?
One of these. I should go there, but I I really need to say that. If my guess is that ninety. Five percent of the impact of toxins. Is on people who don't live in the canyon, right? That that are the workers. If you could show me that we could get jobs for those workers. If they lost their current jobs. You know, I would feel probably differently about this.
I think that's a, that's a red area in using my last name. Like, you know, I I I told my lawn guy, and again, I. I told him, hey, just don't blow my lawn. Like, I I said, I'll I'll pay the same. I just can't get on my damn phone calls when you blow my lawn.
Right.
And. And, um.
You should need legislation. Can find research that demonstrates that communities that have restricted these things have lost in job losses. By law work workers because there's really no need. You're telling them more basically, you do the same thing with an electric blower, for example, you don't, uh.
Or raking.
Or or something else.
Raking.
Well, that was, that was a, that was a bit of a detour. I just, I just, I just, the the health concern for. Franklin. If if we're just saying that the 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 taxpayers of Duquesne, you know, had a cancer risk. You know, I couldn't leave this meeting until I, because I feel that is clearly in my remit. But whether somebody who's. Voluntary in taking a job that has hazardous and then, you know, it. It it is not, you know, he's not a taxpayer, he's not a resident here. I don't really have as much of a duty to that person.
Right, I mean, like if someone's on the sidewalk downtown, we have to, they could sue us and we have to pay for that. So. The the landscapers aren't gonna be suing the town or not having regulation. So like, there's no exposure to the town.
I would suspect also, and again, we, and it's this seems like something where we should go back to prior communities and people who've done research. Uh, we can, there there will be evidence about top, uh, release of toxins that affects children.
Oh, true, definitely. Definitely pets as well, but I. So mental health is a huge issue and you can look at any experience with people who have prolonged exposure to noise. That they can't control for unending period of time is affects their mental health. It affects their physical health. It releases. You know, their own stress hormones and cortisol and things like that. So whether it's also like a. Pulmonary issue or it's a cancer causing issue, which I'm sure there's research out there, I can't discount the, um. Quality of life issue, which is a mental health issue. And with COVID and everything that's happened, that's certainly, you know, putting another layer on it. All the research has shown teens and adults have a much amount on the Health and Human Services Committee. And you look at the rates of mental health. And other issues with adults and it's just skyrocketing. So I mean, if there's no better time to do something with this issue is also now. Um, as in ways.
So if ninety five, if ninety percent of the noise is in the fall. Why are we saying that's okay? If these things have such dramatic compelling health risks. How can we get comfortable with a seasonal ban?
No, because to be, to be the point of the, uh, you know, A is that. We are not seeking utopia. Uh, so we accept that gas blowers are unfortunately. Uh, necessary in the fall because of the volume of leaves. We are not in California. We got a lot of leaves. Uh, however, we are also saying that in the summer, people are outdoors. People are trying to sit on their decks. In the fall, people are inside. So, uh, if if you're using a blower in the summer to sweep the grass clippings off your sidewalk. Uh, you're impacting your neighbors more directly. You're you're exposing them to toxins more directly. Than you are by having your your landscaper blow your leaves in the fall when everybody else is inside.
I don't think we can let perfect be the end week. Yeah, I I think that's a good point. It's not gonna be perfect, but it's sorry.
Sorry, Ben.
Oh, Tom, I wanted to answer your question. Should we, should we be actively involved? Or kind of off to the side? I I would prefer to. Get myself educated, be educated, but I don't think it should be something for the town council right now to legislate. So that's my. I just don't think it's something we should take up.
How about the others? Yeah, I'm you.
Hey, Tom, it's Mark. I. If if I I think we're trying to tackle too much here. I'm I'm kind of. Uh, I'm all over the place. I I don't think, we can't talk about a health issue if it's really just a noise issue. So I'm with, I'm with Hillary. If we wanna, it our best way to solve the problem is to. Modify the existing ordinance. Otherwise, there's no way we're gonna legislate this. And nor should we. Cause the health reasons, I mean, we could talk about a thousand things that are unhealthy for people. It's just not our job to create an ordinance around it. So. That would, that's. Kind of where I stand on the, on the health side of it.
Thank Christina was next.
Tom, it's like trying to to stipulate or put an ordinance that people shouldn't smoke in town. There, I think we'd be going too far. I think that a neighborly letter and articles in the paper may. Gain us more support than trying to legislate from the top down.
Rita.
Um, so I wanna, I wanna decouple the two things because I was just addressing noise. We do have a noise ordinance. It 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 exists. I just read it. Um, and it seems pretty reasonable and I think it addresses Maria, what you talk about, which is. Allowing people who may work to having, there's plenty of time in there for you to be able to do your own work. I do have to say. And I'm not, this is neither here nor there, but where I live, the houses are much closer to one another. So. And when you say noise, it's not just the leaf blowers. It's also people's machinery. It's also construction. It's also, it's a lot of things. And there's a lot more noise in a smaller, more condensed. Can you, you know, area. Um, and and it's more of an issue, I think, than even in the the large. So I it's, it's com, I guess my my. My upside of this, it's complicated. And I don't know that you could, you know, effectively do a perfect ordinance that's gonna satisfy every, it would just be too difficult. So I think, to be honest, I think the ordinance, the noise ordinance that is in place today seems reasonable. So for me, it's about, again, it's about how do we, um, encourage people to be more, um, considerate of their neighbors and. It's more of a, an education piece. Okay, that's the noise even. And then in terms of health, I just think we need to do more work. Um, if we really do feel like, um. The 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 blowers or whatever is a health issue. I do think we should know that and we should, I think we should think about what we might wanna do, but I don't think we're ready. Um, and I do think, again, I think something like a plan at New Canaan could take a big. Role in that education piece and finding that out. And maybe we give them, or maybe they get a grant, or maybe we invest in them. Figuring it out and and helping to educate. And I'm in marketing, like, you know, you can, you can affect people's behavior. By just giving them the right information. So I think, um, that is an interesting avenue to pursue in terms of the health. Portion.
All right, correct me if I'm wrong, but I I think that most members. In this call would favor, um, us pursuing some noise related. Some additional noise related restrictions, not necessarily that we're ready to decide on it, but we should. Study them and come up with a package for people to consider.
I I think just to add to what Rita Mark said, study the noise. To the, to the, um, extent that we should see if our regulations are not working. Uh, you know, are people following?
They're not. They're not restrictive, really.
No, no.
They're not restrictive, Maria. So they're not working in that sense that they don't really control noise that.
Well, people aren't following them, to be honest, like it that either.
You you can do twelve hours a day, Monday through Friday. You can do like nine hours a day on Saturday. You can have holidays and you can do six hours a day on Sunday. That's not really.
Talking.
You were saying, Tom, that, excuse me, you're the chairman, that I I favor what you're saying, like. Let's see, let's explore what what we can do to change the noise ordinance to make it more comfortable.
And that's not to prejudge whether we'll approve eventually, but it sounds like it's something that people wanna. Most, most of us, I think, you know, would. I don't wanna cycle the process. I just wanted to test it to be sure whether you guys had a passion for it because it's time consuming.
Then we have something, then it's not this like amorphous idea of of things that the public. Needs to come and comment on. Then it's if we do come up with some of them, then. That's something that the public can then come and comment on and say, this is why this, I think it's a good idea or I think it's a bad idea for X, Y, Z reasons. Yeah, and then it's not like. I agree with the, how, I don't know, right now it just seems like a very. We're all kind of all over the place, but if we were to amend. Our existing noise ordinance, it seems like a very discreet. Subjects that people can, that the the public can really see and and understand the effect on on that and and how that will. Impact them. And I'd like to come on land soon, which is about how that would, I mean, I agree. And then we could tweak it based on. You know, feedback, what we're talking about. And I I spoke to a landscaper. I don't have a landscape for my property, but I do in. A family property. And I said, would you be willing to come and learn about electric leaf blowers and and hear about things? And he was like, yeah. He felt like really happy to be included in a town discussion. So he wasn't resistant to that at all. And he has twenty five employees and, you know, so he was very open to the idea.
I think Christina has a question.
Oh, mine.
Yeah, Tom, the one thing that I, being that that Tiger is nice enough to be at this meeting. I'm just wondering what time does the Department of Public Works, so the Parks Department, start to blow or cut or use their machinery? Because we can't tell the neighbors, don't do it if if the town is doing it. And I think that's just as important.
Well, we have an exemption. Thanks, Christine. We have an exemption from the noise ordinance for all of our operations. The Parks Department, the Parks Department starts at six thirty in the morning. I always start at seven. The Parks Department tries to stay away from any resident that's close by. So they won't and they try, you know, they have to, they have a mandate of trying to. Work at the schools when the kids aren't there, right? Work to the residents at the times when, you know, not close to residents, you know, residential property. So. They don't come to town hall early because we got residents in the back, things of that nature. So they find other areas to go that are interior to some of the parks before going exterior to some of the parks. Right? Or our buildings. The only time that we run into a problem is either during emergency operations, during snow removal. We have people complain sometimes who are up on the Old Kings Highway area. You know, because we're listening to the tailgates banging or moving snow. Um, or you have a couple of residents who live downtown, unfortunately, and when we're out there at five o'clock in the morning trying to sweep the downtown. Before everyone gets there at seven o'clock, before it's too busy to put sweepers out, they tend to have a complaint. Other than that, we don't get too many complaints. You know, the the largest complaint I get, to be honest with you, is when we're striping. For whatever reason that is, they're there at two o'clock in the morning and the striper comes by, it's got a decimal level that's not very high, but it seems to penetrate. Everyone's house and everyone can hear it. But if you stand next to it, you don't necessarily hear it, but it's a noise that bothers everyone. So that's the only really complaint that I get. As far as noise, to be honest with you.
Fascinating.
I would like to get some quick, uh, response to the. Christina's point that if we're gonna do something, we should not exempt the town.
No, I didn't say that. I said that you have to keep in mind that the the neighbors would look at it as the town can do it, but we can't.
Oh, we've always had an exemption for the town and it sounds like Tiger and the Parks Department takes great pains.
Yeah.
To be considerate of residents.
Correct.
It sounds like they actually do exactly what we want our neighbors to do. Yeah. So they are leading by example. So.
And the other communities have exempted, uh, the, the public works from these restrictions.
Thank you. That's good information. I would not wanna hammer Tiger's one, five year old side department, it doesn't work in any way. I think they do an incredible job. They're saying, we're considerate. Um, and and do the best that they can. And I would not, you know, I would defend that. To the health.
I I agree, yeah.
What's interesting, what? What what Tiger's doing is. It's not literally what what we would be asking town people to do. Because he wouldn't have an hours restriction. He wouldn't have a seasonality restriction. However, what he does is. He's careful, he's thoughtful.
Correct.
And so if we can get everybody to be thoughtful, we wouldn't need a damn law, you know?
Yeah.
Uh. There, I gather that there, there's a business model where the pricing lawn services. You know, can be, can be arranged in such a way that it's more profitable, the more guys I bring to the work site. You know, and so there's the.
Yeah.
How that works. I mean, I would think we have to study that.
I don't know if that's true or not, but I mean, there, there's a, there's a goodwill part of it, but it, but. Tiger is not doing what we're gonna be asking everybody else to do. If we're, we're letting him giving an exception because basically we trust him to make these moves. I mean, he's not.
His phone rang enough.
He's not operating machinery in proximity to children, so they're not exposed to toxic conditions.
He works very hard to not have his phone ring and it rings a time.
And also the Parks Department ends, I get, when we're all having dinner out on our porch and they don't work Saturday and Sunday. So like. Issues that we have have a lot to do with after hours when people are off. I think it's different, but like you said, most of the ordinances, almost all of them include exemptions. So I think that's also a red area. I don't think we have to worry about that.
Yeah, not a personal.
The nucleus of ordinance basically says forty five decibels, right?
No, it it's, it basically says it's a forty five decibels. It mentions forty five decibels, but I think what it's saying is that, is that. If you're below forty five decibels, you can do whatever you're doing anytime you want. If you're above forty five, then you're, you have the hours.
Right, but during the day, you're gonna be above one effectively. So I measured the other day, I was like, I'm on a twenty per zone. And I measured a hundred and sixty eight for my dad.
What would they use?
Uh.
Do you know what it's or or?
You know what that is? That's a lot.
I've never, I've been using a decimal leader for, ever since the project has started, I've never got above a hundred. Well, that's pretty wild.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two week lowers and a, and that was just, it was just irritating. That's like thousands and thousands of times greater than.
Right.
Yeah, no, I know, typical, but you know, it turns out. You know, we do, I I couldn't send a police department over there. I mean, Liam wouldn't be happy with that, right? To, we go and send somebody to go give a.
I don't know if it's a hundred and sixty eight, I would tell him to get it.
Christina has a question.
Tom, I think that, you know, we're not called the next station to heaven for nothing. So I think anything's possible if we put our. Minds to it, but I would like to, uh, move to adjourn the meeting and continue the conversation at the next meeting.
Right.
Second, I guess.
I'm just confused at what we're, what what's the result of this meeting?
Well.
Continue the conversation at the next.
Continue the conversation, but that is. And that is, we're not voting to curtail because we're not ready to legislate. We're actually ready to legislate in this, in the broad sense of the legislative process. We're sort of, that doesn't, that doesn't.
Can I say just one thing? Can I just say just one thing? Cause it's, it's clear that there seems to be two different issues. Can we just agree that we're gonna bifurcate them? So one is noise and one is the health thing. Can we disagree with that?
I I can't agree with that, sorry.
No, me neither. I I think that's over simplification. If you get the same advantages from a.
Yeah, I don't think that does.
From a time restriction, you get the same advantage of the health issue to noise, so.
Yeah, they're kinda inch and climb, yeah. I mean, they go hand in hand.
I I I guess I feel, I, yeah, I I I I feel like we could address, I know, I think there is a noise issue that people feel. And I feel like we can address that pretty easily. I I I, or or more easily. I I think that's something that can be tackled. I think the health issue is more complicated and will take more time. I just trying to separate things out.
I agree with you. Point that in terms of actually taking action. I agree, going back in terms of actually taking action, uh, you taking action via a noise ordinance or via the existing noise ordinance, it perhaps more practical. But in terms of knowledge, uh, to me, one of the takeaways from this meeting is that we go back and get more of the information of people who've done the research about the health impact.
May I ask, who's talking?
John.
Sorry, I'm.
John is a resident, he's right here in the corner, look on your boardroom screen.
We can't, we can't see him.
Can't see it.
Now we can.
I mean, Brian is on the women. Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
But one, one, another takeaway is just, uh, how other towns decided to enforce uh their ordinances.
Right, and how, I mentioned it, uh, for the town, Westport has a very, um.
And a third, third takeaway is potentially how do we practically implement proposal to educate people, uh, and.
But but noise, noise encapsulates much more. It's a bigger issue, it's not just about leaf blowers, it's about construction, it's about, I mean, it's about a lot of things, so I ju, I just feel like it's it's a little bit of a separate thing, I I don't think you can, you can, I think you can, you can um address it with, you know, you could use it to address leaf blowers, but it's, it's, I feel like it's a different animal.
You know, you can, we could yes, we could amend the noise ordinance very generally. Or, I mean, I don't think that we would say there can be no noise in the summer, like, it's quite a beauty, I mean.
Yeah, it's not what I'm saying.
Okay, good, because I think.
There, there, there is a noise ordinance that exists today, I think, you know, just, uh.
That's what we're talking, we're talking about amending it though, to address just the leaf blower issue.
Well, we're often, we're often talking about amending it to uh address noise that is non necessary. So construction noise to some extent can't be avoided. Generally, noise, for example, if the power.
I can give you a list of things that neighbors do, although, I mean, like, I, I, you know, I don't know, I I think it's a different, I think it's a more, um.
I I get that, but that's germane to what we're.
And and I I think we need to table this, we can't bring up new, we can't rehash it. So I think we need to either table and come back to this. Um, I I think we need to vote to adjourn.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
Go, Christina's talking. Christina, interview.
Oh, sorry, interview. Christina.
You're still muted.
You're muted.
Kristy, yeah.
Okay, there was a motion made by me and it was second.
To adjourn.
I.